Let's get started, please. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, April 5th, 2025, regular meeting of the Boulder City Council. I hereby call this meeting to order and ask you, Elisha, to please do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We'll start tonight's roll call, as usual, with Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Mayor Protem Fulkert.
Present.
Councilmember Marquess.
Present.
Shuhart.
Here.
Spear.
Present.
Wallach.
Here.
And Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our call.
Thanks so much. All right, we have a few things to consider before we get into the business of the meeting, so I'm going to start by myself making a motion to suspend the council rules or procedures and to suspend hoping, holding open comment during tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second.
Can I amend the language you're using?
Um, yes, feel free, but let me, if I may speak to the motion first.
Okay.
So just gonna say, um, a couple of words, just that I will note that, um, our open comment over the last year and a half has been increasingly dysfunctional and divisive and has often left community members feeling unsafe. So after the horrific terror attack on, on Sunday, I feel this is a time for us to be coming together as a community. Therefore, I'm suggesting that we suspend open comment for this week so we can focus on the business of the city. And, Tina, if you'd like to make an amendment.
I would just like to change the language to say that we, um, suspend in-person open comment for this meeting and welcome comments via email or audio recording recordings that can be sent to the city council.
I don't know that in-person is quite the right language because we would not be accepting virtual testimony either, so.
Uh, I guess live, open comment.
Does that, does that work as a?
Um, the, the, excuse me. Interested people always have the opportunity to email council, and so that would not be considered open comment. Um, it would instead just, just be an opportunity to communicate with council.
Okay, that's fine.
And I'll note, Tina, that we have already sent an email to folks who were signed up to let them know that there might not be open comment and to say that we invite and welcome them to send us their comments through email. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. This will be a show of hands vote, so all in favor of the motion, please raise your, um, yes, if you'd like, go ahead, if you'd like to.
Thank you so much for this, um, very considerate, um, suggestion, and I know our community is grieving, and our pub, our community has a right to be able to talk to us about it, and that's a part of grieving. Some don't want to speak, others want to speak, and, um, I will, and for those reasons, I'll be voting no on this motion, but, um, again, I appreciate the intention, but I want to honor that grief looks different, and everybody has, should have a right to speak to us, especially now. And unfortunately, my concern is a delay will anger, will actually elevate the anger of those who want to and need to use this opportunity to speak with us directly. So, again, I will be voting no on this, but thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands raised, then I will now ask for a vote on the motion before us. Please raise your hand if you are in favor of the motion. I got five, six, so that's six in favor? Oh, seven. Seven in favor. All those opposed, raise your hand. So that's a seven and two, so that motion passes, so we'll be suspending open comment this evening. Next, I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing item on item 5B, which is a second reading consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance 8697, amending Title IV licenses and permits, Title IX land use code, Title X structures related to code cleanup to the June 12th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. I don't need to speak to this motion, uh, so I will just call for a vote. All in favor, raise your hands. I got nine on that, so that passes unanimously. All right, I'm going to keep going here. I'll be done before too long. So I will now move to amend the agenda to add item 1A, which will be a staff briefing on the June 1st, 2025 Pearl Street Mall attack, to add item 3M, which is consideration of a motion to convert the June 12th, 2025 study session to a special meeting of city council for the purpose of holding two executive sessions, and then to remove item 1B Pride Month declaration, and to reorder items 1C and 1D to the following, that 1B would be the Juneteenth Declaration, and 1C will be the Gun Violence Prevention Declaration.
Second.
Very good. And if I may note that, yes, Teresa?
Uh, yes, if we could just, um, include also in the purpose of the June 12th meeting to hold a public hearing with respect to the, um, item that you all continued this evening.
Got it. So item 3M will be about convening that, um, special meeting for the two executive sessions and the public hearing that you just mentioned. And I will note that we're removing the Pride Month declaration at the request of Rocky Mountain Equality. Um, all in favor of that motion to amend the agenda, raise your hand. I got nine, so that passes unanimously. Okay, well, with the now amended agenda, can we go to item 1A, please, Elisha?
Yes, sir. Our item 1A on tonight's agenda is a staff briefing on the June 1st, 2025 Pearl Street Mall attack.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, for the opportunity, um, to provide an update tonight. Before we begin, I want to say that our hearts go out to the victims, their families, and everyone who was impacted by this horrific act. We stand in sadness and solidarity with our Jewish community members and condemn, in the strongest possible terms, this targeted act of antisemitism and terror at the June 1st Run for Their Lives Walk. I continue to be moved and inspired by the outpouring of resilience, strength, compassion, and care demonstrated by our Boulder community and people across the country and the world. We appreciate all the kind wishes and support we have received since Sunday, and we know that words can seem inadequate at times like this, but the comfort you are bringing us cannot be understated. As you'll learn tonight, this attack was an important reminder that we cannot do this alone. I'm eternally grateful to our local, state, and national partners, city staff, and community organizations who stepped in to help our community in this moment of need. The news media has done a thorough job reporting on what occurred, developments related to the suspect, and details about the combined federal and state prosecution approach that we hope will lead to justice, so I don't plan to focus my remarks there tonight. Instead, I want to highlight the extraordinary response that started at 1:26 PM on Sunday, June 1st, and provide some information about measures we will be taking as we move forward. Staff from across the city have been working tirelessly to respond to this attack and to support our communities in the day since. Here's a summary of those efforts. Our dispatchers were the first called into action as they received frantic calls from Pearl Street saying people were being set on fire. Our police, fire rescue, and open space and mountain park rangers swiftly responded to tend to victims, quickly apprehend the suspect, set up evacuations, and secure the area, including working with the FAA on flight restrictions over the area. You heard our police chief say, chief say that our first officer arrived within four minutes of receiving the call, and his heroic action helped prevent further harm as he quickly took the suspect into custody. We've heard some chilling details about how much worse this could have been had the suspect not been apprehended. In the hours and days that have followed, detectives, evidence technicians, record staff, and others within our police department have worked to assemble a thorough case. Victims' advocates have connected with those impacted, as well as their families, and patrol commanders, sergeants, and officers have been working on increased security planning to prevent additional acts of violence. Our Office of Disaster Management opened the Emergency Operations Center, supporting communication and coordination of the response, and supported the resources and logistics needed. Colleagues from the city, county, public health, the Red Cross, National Weather Service, all responded and helped. Communications and engagement responded immediately, both on the scene and at the Emergency Operations Center, to provide our community with information about the attack. Despite the fact that we had few details, we knew our community would need our support. We activated a core group of city and county employees to begin messaging what we could and start planning ways to address the impacts when we knew, we knew would follow. Staff held three press conferences, a joint press briefing with the district attorney, and coordinated a joint information system structure through our Emergency Operations Center to ensure all parties involved in the responses were aligned on communications. These staff continue to support ongoing and emerging communications need related to the attack. Parks and Recreation and Housing and Human Services staff quickly coordinated an emergency shelter at the East Boulder Community Center as a place for community members who were evacuated, quickly coordinated and, um, and for community members who were evacuated. Transportation and mobility supported Emergency Operations Center operations on Sunday to reroute several bus routes away from Pearl Street and coordinate transportation from downtown to the shelter. This team also supported security measures, including street closures and barriers for yesterday's Stand Against Hate gathering in front of the courthouse. Open Space and Mountain Parks worked with our partners at the Boulder Chamber to light the Boulder Star as a symbol of solidarity and hope. Community Vitality's Office of Special Events supported logistics for yesterday's Stand Against Hate gathering with the governor, the mayor, mo, many of you council members, and community faith leaders. This team is also working closely with police on additional security measures for the Boulder Jewish Festival this Sunday. Internally, we have reaffirmed our commitment to supporting our employees and shared information about the employee assistance program for any employee needing resources related to the attack itself on their response work. The city of Boulder was not alone as we responded to this heinous attack. Our police department had a good idea that this was likely a hate crime or an act of domestic terrorism, domestic terrorism, which is why one of the first calls that the Chief Redford made while en route to the scene was to FBI special, the FBI special agent in charge. During the early hours of the investigation, PD followed protocol and used appropriate caution prior to labeling the attack to preserve the integrity of a potential prosecution. Even as the initial press briefing was being coordinated, law enforcement was interviewing the suspect, speaking with eyewitnesses, and looking through video footage and other evidence. This attack quickly became an all-hands-on-deck situation as the city requested assistance from many local, state, and federal partners. I'm incredibly grateful to the many public safety agencies from across Boulder County and the metro area that responded. I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to the many partner agencies whose swift, professional, and coordinated response helped ensure the safety and well-being of our community. We are especially grateful to Boulder Fire Rescue Department, Boulder Rural Fire Protection District, Mountain View Fire Protection District, Louisville Fire Protection District, and Longmont Fire for their vital roles in firefighting and hazardous materials response. We also thank American Medical Response, Flight for Life Colorado, and Med Evac for their critical medical transport and support. And a special appreciation for our law enforcement partners, the University of Colorado Police Department, Colorado State Patrol, Boulder County Sheriff's Office, Estes Park Police Department, Laramo County Sheriff's Office, Lafayette Police Department, Longmont Police Department, and others for their support and ongoing commitment to public safety. It is through this kind of strong interagency collaboration that we are able to respond effectively for our community when it matters most. I'd also like to express my gratitude for the public information officers from other agencies who stepped up to support the victims and their families. Additionally, other local partners have also been swift to act in support of our community. I'll start with Boulder County. Beyond the fact that the attack occurred at the county's Courthouse Plaza, our colleagues at Boulder County jumped in immediately with public safety support, our joint partnership in staffing the EOC, and in supporting the gatherings yesterday. Our strong relationship with them cannot be understated. Our downtown community was evacuated as part of this attack. Business owners faced very little time to close their doors and leave. We are grateful for their quick response and understanding. City staff began coordinating with Downtown Boulder Partnership within the first hours of the attack to support communication and coordination, working closely with the partnership in the Boulder Chamber Sunday night to ensure that there was a clear process and direct communications for businesses to reenter once it was safe to do so. Jewish Colorado has set up a fund to fund the victims and Boulder's Jewish community information on how to donate and can be found on their website. I mentioned this a bit earlier, but in partnership with OSMP, the Boulder Chamber has lit the Boulder Star from Monday, June 2nd through Sunday, June 8th. This act serves as some, a symbol of community strength, unity, and resilience in the wake of the recent attack. The city joined in two community gatherings yesterday to show solidarity with our Jewish community, the first in partnership with the governor's office, and the second in partnership with the Boulder Jewish Community Center. And the Community Foundation coordinated and galvanized members of the community and city leadership to sign on to and coordinated, uh, coordinated letter condemning the violent attack. Many have asked us about what the city is doing in terms of providing additional security around downtown and ongoing events, and while I know you understand, we don't want to reveal the specific operational details of our enhanced security measures, I want to provide you with an update on the department's ongoing security enhancements around Pearl Street Mall and in other critical areas of our city. For some time now, our police department has been systematically strengthening security in our downtown corridor through several key approaches. They've expanded their collaboration with regional law enforcement partners to ensure coordinated coverage and resource sharing. Additionally, they have strategically increased their visible police presence throughout the Pearl Street area during peak activity periods. During Chief Redfern's tenure, Boulder Police has been fully staffed for the first time in many, many years. Over the past 18 months, the city has hired extra security at the Pearl Street restrooms. Boulder Police has implemented a new e-bike patrol and a dedicated team at the mall, including hiring a downtown surgeon, which you all approved at last year's budget cycle. And I'd be remiss if I didn't lift up the tremendous collaboration with, that we have with our friends at Downtown Boulder Partnership, who established the Downtown Block Officers Program to connect each of our seven downtown block officers directly with the businesses in our Business Improvement District. I will say that moving forward, community should expect to see increased security presence continue, including our efforts to intensify our community engagement efforts, encouraging residents and visitors alike to remain vigilant and report any suspicious activity. Despite our best efforts, our force cannot be everywhere at once, so PDs continue to ask of community members that if you see something, say something remains more important than ever. We're advising visitors to stay aware of their surroundings, inform others of their whereabouts, and trust their entry, instincts if something feels wrong. Our collective efforts make us stronger and safer. In closing, I want to lift up the incredible, incredible work of city staff from so many departments and offer my sincere gratitude to our public safety and community partners. I am particularly proud and appreciative of the leadership of Chief Redfern, who so ably responded and commanded the situation during this horrific ordeal, as well as our deputy city manager, Chris Meschek, who may never let me leave on vacation again, and who showed great leadership in supporting the organization as my, as I made my way back to Boulder. I also want to thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members for your support of staff and community as well. Your collective leadership means so much to us, and we are so appreciative of your collective support. I'm really proud of this community and the continued resilience we demonstrate as we come together to rise above adversity and division. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Nurya, and I won't repeat all the thank yous that you had in there. They were all very appropriate, but just wanted to offer my deep gratitude, which I'm sure is shared by all of my colleagues, for the extraordinary work of city staff during this crisis, and Deputy City Manager, Chris Meschuck, who did an extraordinary job, um, as the, as the leader of the city at that time, um, and also for all of the partners who stepped forward to help us. You listed all of them, so I won't reiterate it, but the amount of support, um, that we received was truly amazing. We're deeply, deeply grateful. From the council side, I was, um, thinking about reading our statement that we issued on Monday, if people will, uh, allow me. So on, on, uh, Monday, um, members of the city council and, um, our city manager released this statement, which I will now read. "As our community continues to reel from the act of violence and terror that occurred on our beloved Pearl Street Mall on Sunday, we, as Boulder City Council members and city manager, acknowledge in the strongest possible terms that this was a targeted antisemitic attack. We stand in solidarity and sadness with those directly impacted by the attack, as well as Boulder's entire Jewish community. We are united in condemning this hateful act of terror against Jewish people. The right of individuals to gather peacefully to express their viewpoints and show support for causes they care about is fundamental to democracy and a core tenet of our local values. We are committed to doing all we can to help law enforcement and prosecutors bring the individual responsible for this heinous attack to justice. As such, we will refrain from any commentary or speculation about the suspect. Instead, we choose to focus today on our Jewish community members who are in hospitals fighting for their lives and struggling to come to terms with deep physical and emotional injuries. They will have a long road to recovery, and we pledge to support them and their families in the ordeal ahead. Terror is not just about causing pain and chaos in the moment. It is intended to sow division and create fear that lasts much longer than any single attack. We understand that for our Jewish community, dread and insecurity, backed by a history of persecution, are all too familiar. We cannot and we will not allow antisemitism to become normalized here. We resolve to continue to support our community through this challenging time." Thank you. Mark, if you want to add something?
Yes, I do.
And I do, I will note, I think we're thinking about the end of the meeting for our general remarks on the topic, if that is acceptable.
That'll be fine.
Okay.
Um, then I simply want to reiterate what you have said and what the city manager has said. We have the finest staff, the finest first responders that I can ever imagine having, and what they did that day was remarkable, and, uh, there were just not enough words to, uh, to praise them, uh, and to, uh, celebrate their achievements. They have held us together, and for that, we should all be grateful.
Absolutely. Okay, then with that, can we go to item 1B, please, Elisha?
Yes, sir, thank you. Item 1B is the Juneteenth Declaration to be presented by Councilmember Wallach.
Yes, as I previously noted, uh, thank you for the brevity. Um, this, this is to celebrate Juneteenth Independence Day, June 19, 2025. Juneteenth is the oldest celebration of the emancipation of enslaved African Americans and is so named after the events that took place on June 19, 1865, in Galveston, Texas. On that date, Union soldiers, led by Major General Gordon Granger, arrived in Galveston, Texas, with news that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were free. Reactions to this news ranged from shock to jubilation. News of the end of slavery did not reach frontier areas of the United States for more than two years after President Lincoln's emancipation approximation of January 1, 1863, and months after the conclusion of the Civil War. Even after word had spread, some slave masters chose to withhold the information, enslaving them through one more harvest season. June 19th recognizes the historical significance of the end of chattel slavery in the United States. Many African Americans continue the tradition of celebrating Juneteenth as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. For more than 155 years, Juneteenth celebrations have been held to honor and remember the substantial contributions of African Americans to American history. The fight for freedom does not exist in a vac- African Americans to American history. The fight for freedom does not exist in a vacuum, and the struggle against oppression and for sovereignty is one we collectively share and are inextricably linked to. Juneteenth celebrates the unity and mutuality of American liberty realized, which makes Juneteenth a celebration of freedom and justice for all Americans, not only those who were enslaved and their descendants. The faith and strength of character demonstrated by former enslaved African Americans remains an example for all people of the United States, regardless of background, religion, or race. The late Lula Briggs Galloway of Saginaw, Michigan, author, social activist, curator of African American history, was the originator of the interim Juneteenth Creative Culture Center and Museum in Saginaw, Michigan. Galloway successfully worked to bring national recognition to Juneteenth Independence Day and encouraged Congress to pass a resolution in 1997 in honor of the day. In continuation of those efforts, Ms. Opal Lee spent years lobbying Congress to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. Former educator and counselor, lifelong social impact leader, and considered the quote grandmother of Juneteenth, unquote, Ms. Lee stood alongside President Joseph R. Biden as he signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act on June 17, 2021, which officially recognized Juneteenth Day of Observance, making June 19 a federal holiday. In 2021, the city of Boulder hosted its first Juneteenth flag-raising ceremony, which has since become an annual event. In 2022, the city of Boulder joined the federal and state government in officially recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday. The city of Boulder will be hosting its annual flag-raising on Monday, June 16, at the Penfield Tate II Municipal Building. In celebration, the city encourages community members to attend local and regional Juneteenth events, excuse me, hosted across Boulder County. "We, the city council of the city of Boulder, Colorado, declare June 19, 2025 as Juneteenth and recognize the historical significance of Juneteenth, support the continued celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for the people of the city of Boulder to learn more about the past, to better understand the experiences that have shaped the nation, and encourage the people of the city of Boulder to observe Juneteenth Day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. The history and the plight of African Americans and all that was endured during chattel slavery, Reconstruction, Jim Crow, and the Civil Rights Movement is an example of pure resilience. This declaration underscores the freedom with dignity of every human being. As a governmental body, we oppose and reject any form of oppression and pledge to support our community members and local entities in solidarity, working to achieve equality and protect human rights." Thank you. And next week, I'll be reading Moby Dick.
Thank you, Mark. All right, can we go to item one C now, please, Alicia?
Yes, sir. Item one C is the National Gun Violence Awareness Day Declaration, and it'll be presented by Councilmember Weiner.
Did you want to introduce Tina, or should I read it first?
Read it first, and then we'll introduce our guest.
National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 6, 2025. Every day, 125 Americans are killed by gun violence. Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Colorado has an average of 951 gun deaths every year, and an average of 1,392 people are wounded as a result of gun violence in Colorado in an average year. Of all 50 states, Colorado has the 28th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. Gun homicides predominantly occur in cities with more than half of all firearm homicides in the nation occurring in just 42 cities. Cities across the nation, including in Boulder, are working to end gun violence with evidence-based solutions. Protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the highest responsibility of city council. Support for the Second Amendment rights of responsible community members goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous and violent histories. Council and law enforcement officers know their communities, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are well-positioned to understand how to keep their community members safe. In January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically, tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 27th birthday. To help honor Hadiya and the more than 125 Americans whose lives are cut short every day and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves and, to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Following the King Supers Table Mesa mass shooting in March 22, 2021, in the city of Boulder, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence now more than ever. We pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe. We, the city council of the city of Boulder, Colorado, declare June 6, 2025 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all community members to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Signed by Aaron Brackett, our mayor.
Thanks so much for that, Tara. And do you want to introduce our visitors?
Sure. We have Tina Pittman-Wagers. I'm looking at the screen, but they're actually not up there. Yeah. And we also have, we also have Mary, Sarah, and Paige. Do they want to make a statement?
And Jean as well.
And Jean. Hi, Jean.
And so we would welcome a few words from you, if you'd like to proceed. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Tina Pittman-Wagers. I'm the Boulder Lead for Moms Demand Action. I want to thank the Boulder City Council for this declaration, honoring the victims of gun violence. It'll continue to raise awareness about this issue. In addition to the statistics that Councilor Weiner just read, it's worth noting that firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens. Gun violence shapes the lives of millions of Americans who witness it, who know someone who was shot, who live in fear of the next shooting. The health and mental health consequences of gun violence are astonishing. Here in Boulder, we're all too aware of the enduring legacy of gun violence. Gun violence happens in very public ways, like the King Supers shootings, but it also happens in ways that people don't necessarily hear about. In Colorado, over 70% of deaths by firearms are suicides. Boulder has suffered more than its share of violence, and this latest horrific, hateful, anti-Semitic attack on Pearl Street is a reminder that we all must work together to keep each other safe. Fortunately, Boulder has been a leader in enacting laws that help to keep our communities safer. Legislation that this city council has supported has no doubt helped shape legislation that is now passed at the state level, too. And strong gun violence prevention state legislation prevented the Pearl Street attacker from buying a gun, his original intent. It's impossible to predict how the terrible outcome of Sunday's attack might have changed if a gun were involved. We're grateful to live in a city that cares so much about this issue, that works hard to do what we can to prevent gun deaths, and we thank you for your declaration tonight. It is an honor.
Thanks so much for those powerful words, Tina. And thank you for all your work, for all of you at Moms Demand Action, for joining us here tonight. Have a good evening. Okay, so that now brings us to item three, our consent agenda. If you could move us there, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our consistent, excuse me, our consent agenda tonight consists of items 3A through 3M.
Do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Just wanted to say something about item E, which is the neighborhood parking program and off-street parking. I just want to thank the planning board and other boards for really comprehensive work on this, and then staff for such an exhaustive process that has included a very comprehensive analysis of what they're carrying forward from recent board recommendations. And I'm very happy to move this forward on to the next step, and I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to everyone for this.
Thanks for that. Not seeing any other hands raised, perhaps a motion?
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Alicia, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll start the roll call for the consent agenda, items 3A through 3M, with you, Mayor Brackett.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Volkerts.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Shoehardt.
Yes.
Spear.
Yes.
Wallach.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
And Benjamin.
Yes.
The consent agenda is hereby approved unanimously.
Thank you, Alicia. Can we go to our first call-up check-in, please?
Yes, sir. Our call-up check-ins are item four on tonight's agenda. 4A is the consideration of a site review amendment to develop a vacant parcel south of Winchester Circle in the Gun Barrel Tech Center, currently addressed as Zero Homestead Way. The proposed two-story building will be about 66,000 square feet and will have future industrial and office uses. This is reviewed under case number LUR 2024-00006.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or desire to call this one up? Seeing no hands raised, we'll call that no desire. So 4B, please.
4B is the concept plan review and comment request for a proposed multifamily project consisting of approximately 203 units and 4,000 square feet of amenity space across seven, three, and four-story buildings at 5600 Airport Boulevard, Zero Airport Boulevard, and Zero Valmont Drive. This is reviewed under case number LUR 2025-00011.
Thanks. Questions, comments, or desire to call this one up? I've got Tina, and then Mark.
Yes.
Go ahead. Missed you entirely. We'll get you next.
Do you want to go first? On this one, I had a question about when we're developing, so we've had some complaints about noise around the airport. Some are from people within the city, and some are perhaps not. Will this project, would we anticipate feedback about noise, and is there a way to communicate with people who will move there so that we don't have to carry that burden moving forward?
I know we have some of our staff online who can perhaps answer this question. Shannon?
Yes. Hi, I'm Shannon Muller with the city of Boulder Planning Department. That's certainly something we could look into and look into conditions on this project. There are requirements in the use review criteria for, for noise-related construction of residential properties in the industrial zone, so that's also something that all properties are required to do in this zone as well.
Good enough. All right, I missed Taysha before, so Taysha, then we'll go to Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question about, like, are we tracking the number of, like, 203 units is a lot of units? And I'm just, and I think we've, you know, been approving more things, and I'm noticing as we're approving things, I'm not, I'm curious if we kind of have a tracker on how many, how many more people that would bring into our community, just that we're kind of tracking impacts to water and energy and just having a collective community understanding around the implications of bringing 200, I've got to really keep my glasses on, 203 units in. So I'm just, I'm kind of curious. And, yeah.
I think, and certainly Brad or staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we certainly know and keep track of the units. We don't necessarily know how many inhabitants are in those, how many people are living in those units, but we do also keep track with our utilities department of water usage and things like that. So as we do continued studies about what impacts are across the city on density, those are some of the, that's some of the data that we use, particularly as, for example, we've been looking at the comp plan, that's some of the data that goes into those analyses.
But it was my understanding that we do have rules on how many, the maximum amount of people that can live in a space based on the size. So I'm wondering if we can perhaps consider using that number as the largest amount, or rather, I'm just, as I said, I, and again, I'm looking to my council colleagues with architecture and just in development and planning experience around just getting a better handle on how many people are, that are, you know, we can anticipate coming into our community as we are not only in a fiscally restraint situation and beyond that now, but we are also in a water constraint, an energy constraint, a habitat constraint. And so, again, just having, I guess I'm asking if we can, if there's an opportunity, and I know we're doing the water portfolio update on July 31st, thank you for that honoring my request, CAC, but I, and I'm happy to wait until then for more information on this item. I know there are others, things that are, that are more pressing and urgent for us today, although the future of access to water, I would imagine, is pressing and urgent. Thank you.
No, and I appreciate that. I know that we have updates of our housing unit data and estimated population on an annual basis. I can certainly take a look at where we have that posted and send that, but I, I believe the, that interrelationship with water usage is what you're trying to get at as well, and certainly we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you so much.
Great. Thanks, Taysha. Mark?
Yeah, I want to follow up on Tina's comments. I think it is important to pay attention to what kind of sound remediation is going to be offered in these apartments. Are there going to be single-pane windows, which will be horrendous, double-pane, which will be better, or triple-pane? I think people who are going to be moving in there have a right to understand what it is they are moving into. If they do so willingly, that's fine, but it should not be a bait and switch, and they should understand the conditions under which they're going to be renting. Along those lines, there has been a persistent problem with residences near airports in terms of lead pollution. A number of cities have studied it and found lead pollution occurring or popping up in children, for instance. Some of the California airports are like that. And so my question is, are we even going to give any consideration to that longer-term health risk, or are we going to take the position that there is no health risk where there is no lead pollution?
I think, and Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you would probably jump in and say that, while you will follow up on some of the questions that Tina has posed in terms of noise and whatever potential condition can be placed, I think the question that you are, that you are asking Councilmember Wallach is a broader one about the potential for lead pollution in our airport generally. That is something that certainly we have been talking about with our transportation and mobility department. It is a topic that we have been thinking about with relation to the airport. It is not related to this call-up item, but certainly something I can follow up with you at a future date.
Let's assume that my primary consideration right now is noise remediation, because that's going to, that's going to let people know if they can actually open their windows during the busy season and enjoy the fresh air. The larger question can be dealt with in a larger manner, and I look forward to getting information about that. Thank you.
Yes, I have to, I would like to qualify on that, because actually, Mark, you mentioned air, and that made me think of the, we, right here, right now, Global Climate Summit that I was able to attend at E-Town this morning. And one of the things that they brought up was the ever-worsening air quality, and one of them was talking specifically about Colorado. So I would also like to add an interest around not only the lead poisoning, but I would also like to add the water and, sorry, air quality as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciated the feedback that planning-
I appreciated the feedback that planning board provided on this. While my, this will, my decision would not be contingent on this. I would encourage, as this is explored, to continue looking at making these facades relate more to the context. This is a little bit of a edgier location for housing. And I think having fun, sort of bright, colorful buildings might be more appropriate in this location. Just something I hope the applicant will consider as they move forward.
Thanks, Lauren. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I didn't hear any desire so far to call this one up. Does anybody want to move to call this up? That looks like a no. All right, thanks for the comments, everybody. And if we can go to our public hearing, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our public hearings are item five on tonight's agenda. And five A is the second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance eighty-six ninety-nine approving annual carryover and supplemental appropriations to the twenty-two-five budget.
Thanks so much, Alicia. Our next item is our, is really about our ATB, our Adjustment to Base. I'm going to send this item over to Krista Morrison, our Chief Financial Officer. Krista?
Well, good evening, Mayor Brockett, members of City Council, Krista Morrison, Chief Financial Officer. Each fiscal year, there are two supplemental appropriation ordinances, known as adjustments to base, that are presented to City Council for review and consideration. Adjustments to base arise during the fiscal year for unanticipated items, such as unanticipated emergency expenditures and new grants that were not originally considered as part of the adopted budget approved by the City Council. Budget Officer Charlotte Husky will walk through in detail the budget adjustments to base proposed in this ordinance. During the May eighth council study session, Charlotte presented the financial forecast showing flattening revenue, particularly the major revenue sources of sales and use tax and property tax below what was anticipated. As discussed in May, Charlotte and the budget team are continuing to monitor the state of the economy, given volatility and unknown impacts from federal policies such as tariffs and grant support. The priority of this City Council in the long-term financial strategy placed Boulder in a better position than many communities. The importance of this work is highlighted during this time of further constraint as we focus on a financially sustainable Boulder, not just for today, but also for the future. The proposed budget amendments to base being presented this evening are reflective of the declining revenue and increasing constrained financial environment. Staff carefully reviewed the criticality of these adjustment requests, given the increasing financial constraints, to present forward only those items deemed necessary to proceed at this time. With that, I'll turn this over to Charlotte to present more information on the proposed adjustments to the budget.
Thanks, Krista. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Charlotte Husky, Budget Officer for the City of Boulder. Good to be here with you this evening to provide a brief overview and presentation on the Adjustment to Base One for the twenty-two-five budget. The summary for the Adjustment to Base One is a total of eleven-point-six million. That's included in tonight's packet and requested additional appropriation across all funds. You can see in this table included on the slide a breakdown of the sources of funds associated with the Adjustment to Base of eleven-point-six million, including a total amount of two-point-six million, supported by additional unbudgeted revenue that was not anticipated in the original forecast in the original budget. Grant revenue of two-point-six million that was not anticipated, or excuse me, it was received mid-year and we're bringing forward for council consideration and approval, and six-point-four million in fund balance of the total. The total overview of the ATB One summary primarily supports capital maintenance needs within the list of needs presented within the supplemental appropriation requests and mid-year grants received primarily for open space and recreation activities as well as public safety. We also include within this ATB One the deappropriation of two internal service funds, our medical self-insurance fund and our dental self-insurance fund. And I'll speak more to that at the end of the presentation. The next three slides focus on ATB highlights that are included within the packet, first focusing on our public safety and emergency response of one-point-nine-five million. We have a total requested increase of one-point-four-five million to support emergency medical ambulance transport renewal for the existing emergency medical services contract with American Medical Rescue to support living wage implementation. The second item included here is two-hundred-and-fifty to support a replacement of the fire engine that is an aging wildfire engine at Fire Station Seven that's intended to support wildfire response across the system in Boulder. And the third being police vehicle purchases of two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand to reappropriate operating funds that were previously approved in the prior year budget, but were unable to be purchased due to supply chain issues. And this request appropriates that total amount to purchase mid-year this fiscal year. The second summary includes a summary of highlights for capital maintenance needs and infrastructure needs within our ATB summary of one-point-one million for a total amount of nine-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, supporting traffic signal upgrades, the Traffic Signal Upgrades Project, to support equipment and technology cost escalation increases for upgrades to various traffic signals across Boulder. There's a total of one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand that's requested to support the radio shop renovation and radio tower electrical service upgrades that's supported by cellular tower lease revenue for the relocation and renovation of the radio shop, as well as for upgrades of electrical services at radio tower sites across the city. And then finally included here is the Alpine-Balsam Garage Fire Suppression of a one-time request of forty thousand to appropriate unbudgeted additional lease revenue to address maintenance needs within the Alpine-Balsam Garage related to the fire suppression system. And then finally, the third ATB highlight summary that I'll share forward here is additional grant and donation funding of ninety-one thousand for Primos Park, the Safe Roots to Park Grant of nine-thousand-five-hundred in grant funding to help to develop temporary transportation activations with a goal of making Primos Park more accessible and safer. There's thirty thousand in grant funding requested to support the Peace Officer Mental Health Grant. This would support peer support team training and other wellness events that's funded by, supported by the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, focused on officer wellness. And then finally, a wildfire risk mitigation grant for fifty-two thousand, supporting the Colorado Forest Service Grant of fifty-two thousand to develop a fuel break between foothills neighborhoods and City of Boulder open-space lands. The final slide that I'll provide an overview on is the internal service funds included in the packet for council consideration for the deappropriation of the medical and dental self-insurance fund. So in this packet, we're recommending an amendment to the Budget Appropriations Ordinance to remove the medical and dental self-insurance fund and consider these unbudgeted. This is in alignment with Colorado Revised Statute twenty-nine-one-one-oh-two-thirteen, which enables local governments to consider insurance pools as unbudgeted funds. It's important to note for City Council that this is removal of, that the removal of these two internal service funds from the Budget Appropriations Ordinance is administrative only. Council will continue to appropriate the operating funds that serve as the originating source of revenue for those funds in the annual budget, as well as in our annual ATB processes, processes. And with that, we will turn it over for any council questions. Happy to answer any questions, public hearing, and then the suggested motion language here.
Thanks so much. Charlotte and Krista, do we have questions for city staff? Tina, Taysha?
Yes, I'm not sure if I'm understanding the packet, but there was, I think there's a mention that we increased funding for the Valmont Road Safety Corridor. Did I have that right, or is that a grant?
One, one second, I will pull up that.
It's for one and a half million dollars, I think.
The total amount that we're increasing is one-point-five, and that's due to cost escalation primarily. So that is drawing from fund balance within the Transportation Fund to support that project due to the cost escalation associated with the project.
So my question was, was this, does that feel like a reasonable cost escalation? Are we seeing any patterns that we should be cautious with as we develop next year's budget?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. It is one thing that we have been working with capital project managers across the organization and understanding the cost escalation related to capital project costs in particular. And so we've been focused on working with capital project managers in support of the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program Development, and taking a look at that to support potential increases. And so that is something that we're continuing to work on with, with the organization and with departments across the organization. And I'm not sure if anyone is on, that would like to add any additional information from the Transportation Department, but happy to answer any additional questions on that.
No, that's, I'm just, you know, I see some of these big adjustments and I, and I'm also a little concerned that we might feel a need to work on some of our public safety funding as we have some immediate needs, just in the interim, as we get to a place. So I, you know, I know that we're continue to be challenged with budget and just continuing that kind of focus and realism about it. So I appreciate this information.
Yeah.
Taysha?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this critical conversation, which if it had happened two weeks ago, I would have different questions than I have right now. So I'd say one of the biggest things is we need to bring back Boulder Strong. So, you know, to provide mental health services and support that were so robust during the Marshall Fire and, of course, the King Super Shooting. I mean, I've seen that work in action, and it is coordinated, is well-planned. And although the FBI provided people with lists of resources and our Jewish community members who were directly affected have access through different funds. When I walked Pearl Street and met with some of the businesses there, they don't have access to those funds. And so, and they don't have money, many of them, to, many of the workers who are making minimum wage or on tipped wages don't have the money, you know, for the rigorous mental health that they're going to need for bearing witness to that tragic act of terror. So, you know, just in general, I'm curious if there were any considerations, you know, given, from when all of this is done to where we are now? And is there any room to, you know, to consider how? I don't know how that was funded before I wasn't on City Council when that happened. And I imagine it was a heavy partnership. But I am feeling compelled to, you know, as I was looking through these things and I was looking, okay, is everything urgent and important? And it was? So I just, so I'm really struggling to meet the needs that I know our community has right now with this mid-year adjustment. So I just think that's something in general, but I have other questions as well. The other one is around the Alpine-Balsam Garage Fire. I forgot the last part of it. Sorry, my computer died, and so I'm trying to use my phone to read everything. So my apologies, I'm not just texting, I'm reading all of the texts that I'm not allowed to read on my computer for this meeting. So I had a question. I know that we have allocated five million dollars for garage renovations, and I was just curious why additional funds, if those funds weren't sufficient in another fifty thousand or however much it was, was necessary? So that's another question. Another question I have is around just the, the Expand B.C. Development, Boulder County Development for Disabilities Grant. And I'm all for adding more money into that grant, but it did ask, make me wonder what percentage of that grant is allocated for City of Boulder residents versus other cities in our beautiful, wonderful county? And those are all, oh, and then just lastly in general, you know how I feel about this. If we're not going to use the EES section on community sustainability assessment and impacts, then why, why is it there? Because I had to scroll down pages and pages to find out the economic impacts, the environmental impacts, the social impacts. Instead, I could have just had it in that section. So I would just love for us to figure out what, how we can better use that section. So, you know, the benefits of that section is really quick and consolidated. And if we're not going to use the section, then having something that says none in environment, when wildfire is in there, when emergency response is in there, that's not accurate. And in social, we have justice grants, we have policing, we have the, something else, I can't read my handwriting around. And so really just, again, if we're going to use it, use it. If we're not, move it. So curious, I'm, I'm open and excited to hear the responses to my questions. Thank you, if available, thank you.
I'm happy to start on some of them, Charlotte. On, I appreciate the last comments. I'll start sort of backwards a little bit. I get that. And actually, in the new Agenda Management System, that will be switched out for the fiscal note for some of the other notations that we will be doing with the impacts to climate and how we will be using the racial equity instrument and so forth. So you're going to see that change with our new transition to a new Agenda Management System. That is, I think, Alicia, July, thank you. Everybody knows the date. Jet lag, people, I'm working on, I'm working on jet lag. So that is coming your way soon. And I'll say, I appreciate, I want to go back to your comment about the needs in our community, particularly when we have crisis, right? Tragedies, crisis. I will say we have emerging needs that happen throughout the year. It is something that we take account of as they happen. And it, tragedies happen without regard to our budget cycle, right? And so we have to pivot and we have to move where we can, when we can. Certainly, it is not reflective in our ATB. Sometimes we can figure out how to support that. Sometimes that happens during a cycle as appropriate, sometimes it does not. As we continue to talk to our community, we will be thinking about what that looks like as we move forward. But we know that our community is thinking about, or we are thinking about how to continue to support our community as we move forward.
Thank you for the questions, Councilmember. So the, one of the questions was related to the Alpine-Balsam Garage, and the reimbursement revenue is really supporting unexpected maintenance issues with the fire suppression system. And so that is the intent of that supported increase. The additional question on the Expand Grant in the City of Boulder Residence is one that we'll have to get back to you on, on the breakdown for that. So happy to follow, follow up with you on that.
Thanks. Let's see, I'm not seeing any other hands raised for questions, so then we can go to the public hearing. Alicia, can you read our public participation guidelines, please?
Yes, sir. Let me give Emily time to get those up. Thank you, Emily. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us again. I will now go over the Public Participation at City Council Meeting Guidelines. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, we ask that you please visit our website as listed and also visit the Boulder Revised Code section that's noted. The city will enforce the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code. And we will begin with, participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. No attendee shall disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any council meeting in a manner that obstructs the business of the meeting. This also includes failing to obey any lawful order of the presiding officer to leave the meeting room or refrain from addressing the council. Only one person at a time at the podium. Our remarks and testimonies shall be limited to matters related to city business. Our remarks and testimonies shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. We ask that you not affix items to the podium, or dais, or walls, or other surfaces of the chambers. Obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting will not be tolerated. Thank you again for listening. We appreciate you joining us.
Thanks so much, Elisha. Okay, I'll just note that our rules do say that public testimony on a public hearing needs to address the matter before us. So anyone who is speaking needs to be speaking to the specifics of Ordinance 8699 that are in front of us, that is in front of us. So if people go on to other topics, I'll give a warning, and if they persist, time may be cut short. Okay, we have one person signed up to speak. That speaker will get three minutes to speak, and that one speaker is Lynn Segal.
Mayor, I do not see Lynn online tonight.
Okay, in that case, we will close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion. Does anybody want to make any comments on this or perhaps a motion? Tina?
Yeah, I just appreciated the short format of this and thank you. And I'd like to move, can I, I'd like to move that we, oh, I don't have the motion.
I think if you could, you can just.
Thanks.
Five A just to move to adopt.
I moved to adopt Ordinance 8699, approving the annual carryover and supplemental appropriations to the 2025 budget.
Second?
Second.
Beat you to it, Matt. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please. Elisha.
Thank you, sir. We'll start the roll call on Ordinance 8699 with Mayor Pro-Tim Folkerson.
Yes.
Councilmember Marques.
Yes.
Shu Hard.
Yes.
Spear.
Yes.
Wallach.
Hi.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
And Mayor Brockin.
Yes.
Ordinance 8699 is hereby adopted. Thank you unanimously.
Very good. Well, that brings us to the end of our formal agenda. And Charlotte and Krista, thanks so much for your presentation. And Krista, this is your first time in person in front of us, yes? I hope it wasn't too painful.
Thank you.
It's good to have you onboard. He, he's lying, just to be clear.
He's just being sarcastic.
Okay, so that's the end of our formal agenda. If, this would be the time, if anyone wanted to offer additional remarks, you could do so now. I will just say I'll encourage a measure of brevity. I know it's been an incredibly hard week for the community, for all of us, for the victims, their families. And I am looking, well, if I can just pause, if I can just call on myself and just say that, that the, I just found that the events yesterday to be incredibly powerful, the Stand Against Hate event in the morning, and then the vigil at the JCC. And I'm just so grateful to the people who organized those. It has been an incredibly hard week for the community, but there was a great measure of community mourning and healing at those two events. So I'm just grateful for everyone that organized those and put those together. I know we have a lot more mourning and healing to do in the days, in weeks, and months to come. So those are my few words about this week. If anyone else would like to add, feel free to raise your hand now. Got Mark? Okay, almost everybody.
First, forgive my voice, it's about at its end. I'm about to do something I've never done before, something I've never contemplated doing before. I am going to directly criticize one of my colleagues, and I must tell you that I believe this criticism is richly deserved. On Monday, the city of Boulder put out a letter of solidarity with the Jewish community of Boulder, a community that was traumatized, broken, and grieving. That letter was signed by every member of this body but one. The letter did not compel any signatory to abandon their views on the Gaza-Israeli conflict, no matter what those views might be. It did not require any member of this council to renounce his or her allegiances or political alliances. It required only that we show some human compassion for members of our community who were suffering. Taisha, if I may address you directly, what could you possibly have been thinking? Your efforts to make a, what I think is a pedantic distinction as to whether a man who attempted to burn peaceful elderly demonstrators alive, to burn them alive, Taisha, was acting as an anti-Semite or an anti-Zionist is simply grotesque. The city's letter was nothing more and nothing less than a letter of condolence to a community in pain. But by your action, instead of the city of Boulder speaking with one voice to address those hurts, the story became entirely about you and your refusal to sign. You may find that act courageous, I find it inexplicable and virtually inexcusable. When you were elected to this council, you became a steward of the city of Boulder, the entire city of Boulder. This week, I believe you failed that obligation of stewardship. I am left perplexed, shaking my head and asking only, where is your sense of grace? Where is your sense of mercy? Thank you.
I'm happy to respond, you know, Mark, I'm sorry that you feel that way. I can honor your feelings. I already, I also made a public comment where I was, or further, sorry, a public statement to our community, and you're all welcome to read that, where I too condemned the antisemitic attack. But when the assailant, or perp, or I don't know what we're calling them, perpetrator, attacker, I can use that, of this heinous violence says three things that we know are recorded, each of them were specific to what is happening in the Zionist, was specific to the Israeli government, not to Jewish people everywhere. And as I mentioned in my statement, it is our responsibility as a city to let our community know all of the things, even when it's painful, because it helps them to better protect themselves and each other. And as my statement said, there will be time for analysis, and I look forward to continued dialogue as we witnessed at the Jerusalem Youth Choir event where Israeli and Palestinian youth work every week, actually twice a week now, not just to rehearse songs, but to have deep dialogues. And they talked about the pain of unpacking things, and again, I won't go into that because this is not time for the head, this is time for the heart. And so I've been really focusing, and so now I'm just going to go into my comments if you wouldn't mind. So I just want to thank everybody for the outpouring of support that you have offered to our community in so many incredible ways. Thank you for all those who joined the vigils and the Standing Up for Hate events. I'm honored to be able to speak with victims directly, and I'm grateful that some of them have opened their hearts to speak and hold space with me. And I continue to have and hold space for them and have further dialogues with them. But right now, I'm focused on healing and grieving the anger and denial and bargaining that comes up when a tragedy like this acts of violence, being set on fire is something akin to lynching, I might say, or even actually being set on fire, which many, many of my ancestors also experienced. So I'm acutely aware and very empathetic to the Jewish plight. I also want to thank all of the business owners, managers, and staff I had the opportunity to meet yesterday while walking down Pearl and meeting with businesses. Thank you for sharing your grief, your trauma, your pain, and your need for stronger mental health support. We are doing everything we can to make that a reality for you, as you too witnessed, an incredible act of violence that will have ripple effects for many years to come for you. I also want to, I just, will end with the calls of action that I posted about based on the conversations I had around bringing back Boulder Strong, calling all artists and musicians and healers to go to Pearl and play music and offer your services of support, as well to the JCC Center and to our incredible, como se dice, places of worship throughout our communities. I'm sorry. I would also, and then my last call, and then that will be the end of my comments, is to go down to Pearl Street, please. They need us. They need our time and energy, they need our presence, and they need to address the additional economic impacts that has been caused by the heightened fear that people have to go downtown. I was there again today, and I'll continue to be there every day until I have an opportunity to meet everybody that was in eye shot and ear shot, that terrible word of, choice of words there, my apologies. And then lastly, thank you again to my colleagues for the incredible work I've seen you do and the spaces that you have been holding for so many community members. Thank you to the staff who are absolutely tremendous. Thank you to our community members who again and again remind me that Boulder is strong. So I look forward to continued dialogue for many, many months and years ahead, because we must face, we must face, what cannot be named cannot be faced, and we must faith the truth, the full truth of the matter together with love, so that we can have a peaceful coexistence in the generations ahead. Thank you so much.
I got Tina, and then Tara, and then Nicole, and then Lauren.
Yeah, I just wanted to, obviously, the attacks on Sunday were terrible and we all feel deep sadness. I'm thinking of the victims every day and the unimaginable terror they experienced. And I'm incredibly thankful for the Jewish community and faith leaders who stepped up as Nurya and Aaron have both recognized. The JCC holds a special place for me and the way they have helped shepherd us through this incredible, incredibly horrible event is just been something that I'm very thankful for. And finally, the city staff, you all did great, and I appreciate the way you communicated with council and kept the focus on the victims. That is our focus, and it's my focus, and I hope that the healing continues for all of them. Thank you.
Tara?
It has been a horrific week, and my emotions have swung from outrage to sadness to anger, but never to surprise. This act of terror sadly comes as no surprise to our Jewish community. I've said this to many people in this room many times, that I was worried about the name calling, I was worried about the cursing, the screaming, and the bullying in the council chambers by people who insist we need to take a stand on international affairs after voting over a year ago, seven to two, that we would not. And I said to many in this room, this was not going to end well. How many times did I say that? And it did not end well. Violent rhetoric often leads to violent actions. You cannot expect nothing to happen from continually dehumanizing Jewish people. To those who believe that setting Jewish people on fire is an anomaly, this is not the first time Jews have been burned alive. Here are just a few examples way before the Holocaust in history. With just a simple Google search, in 1349, Jews in Strasbourg, France were scapegoated for the Black Death. About 1,000 were burned alive. In 1349, that same year, it was not a good year for Jews. In Mainz, Germany, 6,000 Jews were massacred and again burned alive after being blamed for spreading the bubonic plague. On July 10th, 1941, in Yevadne, Poland, more than 1,600 Jews, virtually the entire town, the entire population, was forced into a barn by their neighbors and burned alive. These are just three examples, and now we can add June 1st, 2025. I have a few more points. To the council member who somehow made this tragedy about her political views and not about the people who were set on fire, some of whom are my dear friends, I urge you to please rethink your perspective. To those organizations and individuals who issued statements or reposted other statements about Sunday's terrorist attack that merely condemn generic violence without acknowledging this is an attack on Boulder's Jewish community, please consider revising your statement and name what happened. Here is a quote I just got today from a Jewish community member via email that she quoted from somebody else. Quote, "Let me say this plainly, when people target Jews for being Jewish, it is antisemitism. You do not need to know how they feel about Zionism. You do not need to know what their politics are. So I ask you, my community, will you say it with me? This was antisemitism, and it is enough." End quotes. I want to end with gratitude, and a little bit of a better note here. And first, I want to express my deep appreciation for our police and fire rescue departments who responded so quickly and helped prevent additional devastation. Next, there was an incredible outpouring of love and concern from people in this community, and it has been overwhelming. I want to hug all of you. Thank you for the texts and the calls and the emails, there were so many. Also, more than 1,500 community members came to the gathering at the JCC, it was quite crowded, with another 750 joining online. So many in our Jewish community feel the love and support right now from you, so thank you. And to those listening from across the country, I want you to know that Boulder is a truly wonderful place with the best people. They are the best. It is a big, small town where you always run into somebody you know. There is love, and there is friendship, and there is joy, and we depend on each other and we count on each other, and we will not let this tragedy define us. Thank you.
Nicole, and then Lauren.
It has been a horrific week, and I am so grateful to the Jewish community for bringing us together yesterday to share your grief and to better understand our own feelings in witnessing this horror. Tonight, I want to speak to the non-Jewish members of our community. Right now, it's our responsibility to listen to the Jewish community that was the victim of Sunday's horrific antisemitic attack in our downtown. A Holocaust survivor was set on fire. Two of our community members remain hospitalized and another 13 injured. Our neighbors are traumatized, our Jewish colleagues are traumatized. We have work to do to make sure that we model our community's values and show up for all hurting and oppressed people, including Jews. The days after a hateful attack in our community are for honoring the physical and emotional pain of the victims and the broader Jewish community. I hope we can work this summer to understand what we can do to tone down the violent antisemitic rhetoric that's persisting in fringe areas of our community, taking over our chambers, and normalizing antisemitism and antisemitic violence here in Boulder. And that's on all of us who are not part of the Jewish community. I hope we do better to combat antisemitism moving forward as a body and as a community. And thank you again, and I am so, so deeply sorry to our Jewish community for the horrific violence that you have had to process this week. And I wish a very speedy recovery to all the victims.
Lauren, and then Matt.
Thank you to my colleagues for sharing all of your words. I cannot agree more with how proud I am to be here with you and the different ways that you're trying to hold our community in this difficult time. I have heard many people talk about this attack and whether it was truly antisemitic or whether, when the words that have been shared were so clearly Zionist. And because of this ongoing discussion, I would like to start by sharing a comment from the Jewish community member that struck me, and I can hope build empathy. After sharing a web of connections they had to several significant antisemitic attacks in this country regarding this particular attack and this and this semantic arguments and how it is defined, they wrote, "I do believe that anti-Zionism and antisemitism are different. However, even if the perpetrator's intent was anti-Zionism, the impact is antisemitism. Tragically, a violent perpetrator would attack me for showing my religious signs and will not first ask, stop and ask my political beliefs before assaulting me. Regarding my political views about the other side of the world, in my own home, I no longer," they would not ask about my own political views on the other side of the world. "In my own home, I no longer feel safe to practice my religion or share my culture with others. Our Jewish community is not a monolith, but I know that this fear is shared by many in our community, and it breaks my heart. Words and actions are not the same thing, but it is important to recognize how dehumanizing rhetoric in any form helps normalize and create justifications for violence. I will do what I can in the spaces that I am in to speak against that. And I know that healing is a bumpy and crooked road, and there will certainly be challenges to overcoming our divisions. But I know that we can find a path forward where we can focus on uplifting each other, building back our community as we have done so many times before. We are strong, we are resilient, and I know that we will never let any form of hate or violence win."
Matt?
I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. Important things have been said tonight. And I'll just start by saying that, you know, the investigation will play itself out. We'll be asking questions about how this all happened. But when we look inward, we have to recognize that antisemitism has been a growing gangrenous scourge on our community since October 7. It has grown, and it has become a lesson of how we've become somehow tolerant to the intolerance, and we've become numb to the antisemitism and let it run roughshod over our community, over these chambers for far too long. It can't be dismissed as a fringe part of our community when a member of this council has peddled and egged on this very antisemitism that we are fighting today. It has to be recognized that we look into ourselves, into this dais, to the actions that have taken place here, and recognize as leaders, we are either pushing back, and we are standing against it, or if we allow it in, it will take over and consume. And that's what's been happening. And I think we all have to think deeply about why that's occurred and be willing to stand up to it. Antisemitism has no place in our city, our state, or this country. And we need to stand firmly against it, and we need to move beyond the words and start taking the actions to prove to not just our whole community, but our Jewish community, that we take this seriously. Ending on gratitude is probably the best way to end this. And that is, again, just being grateful for our first responders, grateful for staff. Chris Meschuck, you did an outstanding job. No one wants to be put in that position as our deputy city manager, and you dealt with it firmly with grace, and I just commend you for that. So thank you, Chris. It's also important for us to just think of our victims. They are friends, family, and neighbors. And we need not think of them as Jews, because if you're not Jewish, you think of them as someone else. They are our friends, they are families, and they are our neighbors. And it's also, on that note, important that we constantly remember that our actions have consequences and that we are in a place to do better and be better, and we must, and it starts with us. Thank you.
Right, that's the end of the hands. Although, Taisha, did you say you want to say a little bit more?
I did. I just wanted to thank my fellow council members. And I forgot to add this about the Jewish community members that I've had an opportunity to speak with that have thanked me for speaking on what was not said about that and distinguishing between those two things, not as a political viewpoint, but as the fullness of what happened and really differentiating from a government versus a people. And we need to make sure that we're here for all of our Jewish community members who have been oppressed since time memorial. I can empathize. But we also must address the governmental components. And as I commend Matt for his comments around the escalation, and I'm seeing a very perverse increase as the calls for humanitarian aid are met with fire. The government's actions have a ripple effect that comes all the way into our city's limits. And unfortunately, that act of terror of violence, he was very specific about that. So I just want to thank the community members who spoke with me, who shared their concerns around saying this publicly, and so thanking me for making that critical distinction. And again, I look forward to future conversations and dialogue to really unpack. Thank you. Oh, God.
Oh, best wishes. Thanks, colleagues, for your comments. And I'll just end by saying, reiterating that hate and antisemitism have no place in the City of Boulder and wishing the victims a swift and full recovery. And with that, I will gavel us close here at 7:31 PM. Good night, everybody.